All right, we're going to go ahead and get this work session started. Just so the public understands, this evening, I'm not doing public comment during the work session. You can, if you're hanging around for the meeting, we can do public comment on items not on agenda, on item six, or you can do 9B, or you can do November 3rd when we hear the actual ordinance. So, because I was also just made aware that I have two council members who want to do PowerPoint presentations for this evening, and I did not know that ahead of time. I'm going to limit each of your PowerPoints to five minutes. So hopefully you can get it done in five minutes. Right, but you guys can't take up the whole work session with your own PowerPoint. So, so if you can't click through them within five minutes, if there's discussion from council, great. If not, though, get the clicks through within five minutes. You can't, because I'll end the meeting. I see what you're saying, Robert. But I just, I wasn't aware of how they were going to go or what's going on. So if they're just like clicking and just one person's talking, I'd like that limited, so that everyone can participate, is what I mean. All right, so Frank or Robert, who would like to start?
Mayor, if I could just briefly, just a little bit of light context. We provided to you all a couple items earlier this week. One of them is a map as up to days we can get with the locations of all the short-term rentals and the number of rentals by zone type. We have, I believe, over there, I can't see from here, is a printed out version of that map for folks in the audience if they want to check that out. Karen Schminker, Planning Director, also provided you all with a memo, basically rehashing what we've done so far, engagement with the Planning Commission, planning commission's recommendations, and then just a number of different things that have been discussed, only to give you basically a checklist of things to think through, different categories, different topics of discussion within this broader item to think through tonight. And so, staff does not have a structure for this, this meeting. We were asked to make this just kind of a blank slate for you all to discuss. We're here to, we're here to happy to answer questions, give insights into the materials we provided for you. But otherwise, we will stay out of it and let you chat, all right? So it worked, I can't characterize that, all right?
Thank you, okay.
All right, so Sarah, you have PowerPoint, you want to put the first slide there, that's great. Oh, can you hear me all right? How's that? Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Very good. So, good evening, everyone. Thank you, Council, for convening for a work session. Frank and I requested it, and I've requested it for, well, we'll go through the presentation. You'll see why. I want to first thank all the community members who have really given us grits for the mill to get started on this. I want to thank the Planning Commission for flying blind, because we, as council, hadn't set policy for you, so. And I want to thank Karen and her staff and Grace for all your work, because that's foundational for what we have to talk about tonight. All right, so, short-term rentals, policy discussion. What are our objectives? What's best for Woodland Park? How, how did we get here? Oh, it's probably going automatic, huh? Yeah, you probably put that thing on pause. How did we get here? What's the role of those of us here on council as elected officials? What challenges do I see? Discussions and solutions, and the next step. The next slide. So, the purpose is to evaluate this entire problem from all sides. To that end, as, as Michael has said, we've held community meetings at the U-Pass Cultural Center, where city staff directed discussions and storyboarded comments that were made. And the next one. Staff then collated those findings, report was drafted and delivered. The attorney brought in ideas from other jurisdictions of what other jurisdictions are doing in terms of short-term rentals. Next. We've had three joint sessions between the Planning Commission and ourselves to look at these issues and just like bounce a bunch of ideas and a bunch of findings off each other. Next. Our city attorney, in conjunction with the Planning Commission, has drafted and redrafted language for the proposed ordinance in an effort to solve the short-term rentals in Woodland Park. Go ahead. And finally, the Planning Commission has labored long and hard over the code, the regulations, gathering community and attorney input without the benefit of clear policy direction from those of us who are the elected officials. Please. We're the elected officials of Woodland Park, and I believe it's our responsibility to give instruction to our staff and the voluntary boards and commissions to not simply respond to their lead. One more part of that. Yeah, I know, it's a... It is my opinion, and it's our privilege to set policy on difficult matters, and clearly, short-term rentals are a very difficult matter. And tonight, I'm confident we'll bring a great deal of collected data for a lively discussion to bring clarity to the SDRs in our city and with a hope of making policy. So, we have some data. Tonight, we have the opportunity to discuss and define what's best for our community. We have heretofore defaulted to our unelected employees and volunteers to digest the input and guess on a policy. I believe that that was been an unnecessary burden that we've placed on them, and I think we've seen that with the long, long sessions that they've had to work through. We are a representative republic. Our individual freedoms are protected by separating powers between three elected branches of government at a federal, state, county, and city level. In that capacity, we're here on the dais of the representative government closest to the people here in Woodland Park, and we set policy for staff and the appointed boards to follow. Government has a function, and that function is to enforce the policing of the will of the community through setting public policy and voting on ordinances. So, the most prized possession we all have is private property rights. It's best known around the country as the Castle Doctrine. My home's my kingdom, and I have the natural law right to defend it. So when government starts to make laws and regulations on that, the average citizen bristles. Next slide. So, there's a rub. Private property rights, we covenant in community to delegate some of those rights for the betterment of our group as neighbors. And we see that, for example, in the police department and the fire department. We delegate those powers, say, you defend us, you put out the fires so we can go to work and do the things we like to do. It gets a little more complicated than that as we structure this, as the community grows and gets larger. And so, we've agreed to an orderly planning of our community, and we've sectioned our city into these orderly areas, which you'll see on this excerpt from our reports that we've received. So we have the, of course, you all know, we have the suburban residential, urban residential, multifamily urban, multifamily suburban, plan unit development, commercial business, commercial, community, commercial, and neighborhood commercial. So that's what we have agreed together. Those are the districts that we want to see in our community. However, through unclear short-term rental policy, we aren't following our own agreements and we've said, that we've set in place over the years. And now, this is what we have. This is the report, the most current report of those short-term rentals that are in each of these districts. So we have varying percentages, 5.81 to 1.4A, up to as much as 19.4% of those properties in those districts. The question is, what is best for Woodland Park? There's some markers that can serve as a basis for our policy discussion this evening. One would be minimum government intrusion into private property. Two would be community, city and community express priorities, housing stock, and the zoning delineations. So, how did we get here? Well, I would say Councilmember Connors was who I would call the canary in the coal mine to cause us, as a community, to have to look at this issue. So, and the primary issue for me is private property rights, and they cut two ways. Free enterprise comes in and says, hey, I want to do what I can with my own property. You can't mess with me. There's the free market of demand and supply. Then you have, once you start getting the government involved in commercial enterprises, you have regulations and business versus the Castle Doctrine of, hey, this is my property, don't mess with me. And that brings to me, biggest issue that I see here with this map that we've created, it's the camel's nose under the tent. It says, look, you've got these, you've got these short-term rentals in all of these different areas around town. We've got to do something to regulate that. Now you're starting to regulate private property, and it's not consistent at all with what our long-term plan is in the different zones that we set up. So, it brings up another really tense point in the community that I see, and that is, are we a bedroom community? Are we a destination city? Or are we a pass-through for visitors? And so, how do you satisfy those concerns of folks who see where we are and where we're going in any one of those three areas? And to me, that's where we really have to wrestle with. And we don't, and as a free enterprise guy, I recognize you cannot have a strong bedroom community unless you have a strong business community. They are not mute, they are not exclusive, they are interconnected. So, some other markers are, we have housing shortages clearly in our community for staff, for first responders, for community workers, for teachers, and for students. Affordable housing, or just housing in general, is competing with out-of-town visitors. Unauthorized moving of the zoning lines have established our city and aspirational guides set in our 2030 comprehensive plan. And minimal government regulations and cost implications versus more government regulations and the, the cost for us to administer that as a community. Please, Sarah. So, we have, the moratoriums highlighted a problem I didn't consider at first to be urgent. I was wrong. I voted no on a moratorium, and as I've started to see all the public engagement that we've seen, it has been a very necessary and vital for us as a community to look at short-term rentals. As I've listened to citizens, business owners, and colleagues, I examine the findings through the lens of our nation's Declaration of Independence, Constitution, and the Bill of Rights. My role as one of our local representative government officials is to weigh possible courses of action. And I see there's three of them. One, we can let the moratorium expire, and we can go back to business as usual, and we can let the market dictate the future, ignoring our zoning laws. We can try to please everybody. Set no policy or policy that disrupts each zoning district and impose more laws and regulations than, in my opinion, cross over the clear lines of private property and commercial property and establish lodging criteria. So that's the point where the camel's nose goes under the tent. It's like, once we start saying, okay, we're going to have 2% here, and 8% here, and 4% here, and 1% here. Once we start doing all that, we have to create a regulation and a control and a, making everything fit so that all of these different people don't upset where they are and they're in zones which we never set a policy of where they should be or shouldn't be. So that camel's nose under the tent, to me, is a huge alarm bell. And the third option is, we can set policy consistent with our existing zoning laws and create an ordinance that clearly defines what we have, have in place and a trajectory of where we would like to see our community grow. There are opposing forces. The business owners and property owners will assert their property rights. Some of them are doing it responsibly, some are not. I could go into examples, but I want to give just an overview here. Residents are up in arms that they no longer confident in the sense of community that we agreed to through our process of zones and districts, which allow them to know their neighbors, live peaceable lives, and versus increased regulations, which is like, too many cars are parked there. There's fire, there's noise, there's all the different issues which we've seen brought up in the public discussions. However, these SDRs have allowed zoning that's inconsistent with what we agreed as a community. So let's see why. This is just a little interlude here. This is, in our neighborhood, we had a block party. And the sense of community, you know, I thought this is a great example. It's something we should do every year, we should do it in every, every community here in our community, and then have one at Memorial Park for all of us to get together. That would build some great community, would really help us get to know each other more and maybe dissolve some of the divides that, that I see. What's best for Woodland Park? We designed our community to have, as you'll see here in the next picture. We designed it to have not short-term rentals in suburban residential, nor urban residential, nor multifamily urban, nor multifamily residential. It's a question whether it is appropriate to have them in planned unit developments. You could certainly make an argument for, for future planning. That could be something that was structured in, if that was agreed to and worked out as being part of a vision for the city. And the ones where they are quite acceptable are in the three bottom ones, which is commercial, business district, community, commercial, neighborhood, commercial. And I would challenge the fact that the total are, it says the total are all eligible properties. I would say they are not, according to what we as a community have already laid out in place. But by lack of setting policy, that's what we find ourselves, and that's why we called a moratorium. This is that map that you'll see over here to the left of Suzanne. Boy, I, Michael gave me the, the map before this, and I looked at it, and it's just, it's such a concern. There's no orderliness to it. There's, short-term rentals are clumped together, and it really is, I can understand why neighborhoods are concerned, because we have, we've set no policy, it's just, it's, it's the Wild West of, of short-term housing. Please. So, I, some of you might remember these two characters, Laurel and Hardy would say, that's another fine mess you've got us into this time, Ollie. And I think that's exactly where we are. I would suggest that these SDRs plotted on the map are not eligible, as I've stated, and they're out of, out of where we have decided to go collectively as community. Now, as Councilmember Neil and I would say, the 2020-30 comprehensive plan is an aspirational document. It's not, it's not set in law, but it certainly tells us where the desire of the community wants to go. Predominantly here, we saw this from our in-community engagement. The predominant priority of the focus group was community character. And to preserve that community character, we have to follow what we set in place, followed by noise and traffic and, and other priorities. As elected officials, we need to consider these contrasting opinions of our citizens. There's three issues. Weigh carefully the future direction for our city. Recognize that the policy we make will set the trajectory for the future. And then we need to give direction to staff and our appointed volunteers to carry out our collaborative conclusion. Vote on matters of policy and legislation. My suggestions, that we clarify the SDRs as lawful and commercial zones. The DDA has recently entered into negotiations with an investor to develop Woodland Station. For those of you who are not aware, part of the requirements on their disposition agreement is that they will keep the first floor in that entire six acres as commercial development on the ground floor. This could be a perfect opportunity to develop that downtown district with some of the short-term rentals. We need to discuss, we could discuss, I'm talking about my suggestions. We could discuss a variance application process for PUDs. So there's three keys to keep in mind as I conclude here. Respect private property issues and leave owner-occupied short-term rentals unregulated. That's owner-occupied. Two, no regulations on long-term rentals, which there aren't anyway, except a sales tax on owners or entities that own more than one property. That's quite consistent in other cities. Three, minimize staff, time, and costs attempting to regulate what I call a square peg in a round hole with respect to zoning. Closing thoughts, business owners can pivot and profit. Residential stays residential, preserving, preserving the community character. Rental housing, the rental housing shortage finds its level in the market. Some of those properties may go back up for sale, some of them may turn into long-term rentals. But the market then gives us an opportunity to house those who are already in a crying need in our community for housing. Housing open for workers, first responders, and students. Founder's quote, Thomas Jefferson, on a matter of, on matters of style, swim with the current. On matters of principle, stand like a rock. So thank you very much, I yield to my fellow council members.
Maria, you're out of order.
Excuse me, ma'am?
You are completely out of line.
Yes, you're totally out.
We're going to have to ask you to sit down. You are out of order.
You're embarrassing yourself when you find out the facts. Would you wait till our city attorney tells you the truth and the facts of the matter, and you're going to be very embarrassed? Please sit down. Maria, you're going to find out, I do not have an application, it was withdrawn. It was withdrawn.
Ms. Sainell, why don't we go ahead and let the attorney address your questions?
Tell you what the facts are.
You know what, we can go ahead and adjourn the work session, and we can carry on at another time. Let's go ahead and adjourn right now.
Wait to the police. Five minutes. Five minutes.
All right, we're back in work session and we're gonna go ahead and let Councilmember Connors begin.
Thank you, Mayor Sarah. And I I had the slide set for an hour. So if. My week has been rough, so it's taken me a minute to read these. All right, what I'm gonna do is I'm just gonna go over a real quick. I'm gonna go over what are the ordinances and laws around our city? So we get an idea as a council of what other cities and states and counties and whatnot are doing. Basically around us and it has to do with the people who invest in the ones here. So we go the first slide please. So Park County, this is their like their good neighbor policy. Number seven and eight are quite particular to me. You cannot have on the premises any portable outdoor charcoal grill fireplace fire rings. Or am any ember producing equipment? So that picture council member Zuluwaga with your fire pit. You wouldn't have that in Park County in a short-term rental. Also skip further down, you can't ride your ATVs on the county roads in Park County just as an SDR rental. You can go to the next slide. So for Dallas, so Dallas calls these hotels. And that so they're short-term rental because they pay a hotel occupancy tax. They're referred to as a hotel. I'm not gonna tell you what the definition of a hotel is. It's written right there. But they added short-term rental as part of the definition for their short-term rentals. Thank you. Have never been legal in residential neighborhoods under the city code. Houston, Texas have hosted and unhosted rentals in Houston, Texas. Hosted rentals are with the owner actually living on board. You can rent out your condo, but you gotta be living in one of the rooms. Unhosted you can have, but you can't have them in residential neighborhoods. So you can't be a non-occupant and residential in Houston, Texas. Colorado Springs. So here's a couple. The owner occupied units are allowed in all the residential zones. The non-occupied owner occupied SDRs are not permitted in single-family housing. And they have to be 500 feet away from other short-term rentals. Next page. While the city does not cap while Colorado Springs does not cap. The permits issued, the limitation on non-owner occupied permits. Likely acts to suppress or decrease the number of non-owner occupied permits sought and issued. Further, the city limits the number of licenses to one permit per lawful dwelling unit. On a property and up to four SDR units per property. Each owner of a condominium or similar building is limited to two SDRs. But they cannot once again be in single-family neighborhoods. Manitou Springs. Manitou Springs is towards the end of a one-year moratorium. They've limited their SDRs to 2%. Which only gives them 58 potential permits. Come the end of this month, Manitou Springs are gonna start talking about re-upping or. Opening up or doing something, but their moratorium expires in December. The negative next slide please. The negative impact of SDRs on housing prices in general, the how the affordable housing market. Neighborhood safety in the character of neighborhoods that are not designed for tourists are reasons that we had the moratorium. Next slide please Summit County Summit County is in the midst of a temporary nine-month moratorium. Thank you. This doesn't include their residential overlays. Same reasons they're having housing issues. Chaffey County, Chaffey County, you have to have a local agent and you have to be able to respond within one hour of the emergency. Next please. Denver, Denver does not allow investor-owned SDRs or multiple licenses per person. You must live in your SDR in Denver. Next page please. Balder. Balder County vacation rental license is permitted only in certain districts. Unsubdivided land and is not permitted in subdivisions. Winter Park, this is the craziest thing of all times. Winter Park Town Council recently passed an initiative program. I've no idea where they got the money from. We would never give this money away. It says, wow, this is crazy, wasn't it? So their short-term rental people are paying, the city is paying short-term rental houses and apartments. 5,000 for a six-month lease and 10,000 for a year lease for a one bedroom. And for a two and three bedroom, they're paying 10,000 and 20,000. They're not doing it anymore this year because they ran out of money, huh? Go figure. So but yeah, so that's they're really, really working hard for their SDRs there. So my final thoughts. In 2019 and 2022, Woodland Park short-term rentals increased year after year. It is interesting that at the same timeframe that other city ordinances were put in place to limit or outlaw short-term rentals. But they ended up here. The previous slide showed other cities and their SDR limits and the same cities where those SDR investors are are now in our city. The laws and regulation that govern the short-term rental market are consistently changing as more cities continue to take steps to protect residential neighborhoods. And communities as witnessed by the current and ongoing moratoriums by other cities. Every housing unit used in this way is a housing unit that is no longer available to Woodland Park long-term residents. It is not the reason for affordable housing crisis, but it will make the crisis permanent. Woodland Park places a high value on our neighborhoods and our in our device population resides there. I believe the city must help preserve and protect the character and charm charm of our neighborhoods. A city requirement that SDR operators actually live on the property. A city requirement that SDRs operate in our commercial zones and central business districts only. The city must collect enough in fees to cover cost of regulating and enforcing the requirements. That's my short-term rental. One of them, gotta see the one across the street. That's all I have. Thank you, Sarah. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you Frank. Okay, council, we're gonna go ahead and open it up for discussion amongst ourselves. David, I'm gonna go ahead and let you start if you'd like.
This mic working here. I mean, I feel like they don't really belong in residential neighborhoods. I wouldn't want that pictured next to my house. We are a bedroom community, whether people like that or not, we really are. It's really quiet in my neighborhood. I don't have any around me. And at nighttime, my neighbors are talking in their house and their windows open. I can hear them. It's that quiet. So I'd like to preserve that piece. You know, that's why I'm here is for that. So for me, I mean, I I feel like I would like to not have them in a residential area. They could be the commercial areas. They can be anywhere else. But I don't feel like they should be there. It's it's zoned residential for a reason, not to run a lodging business out there.
Do you feel like the the ordinance is going to address that for you?
I don't think so. I mean, I I read everything. I saw on there the possibility to as one of the options was to go ahead and allow everyone that's there now. Until they change ownership of the home, but that'll that'll last forever. I mean, it would be, I don't think that would you would see that change. You know, initially I was kind of in favor of just limiting limiting them. Like some other communities have, but we're so far over, you know, the a 3% or 2% anyway. That it's and they're like Robert said too, they're clumped together. I wouldn't like it if I had three of them next to my house. And I don't know. I imagine other buyers probably wouldn't want that either unless they were buying it for a short-term short-term rental. Then I feel like if it was me and I was trying to sell my house and people knew that I had those around me. They might consider not buying my place and look for another place. And maybe I'm wrong. It's just my what I feel like here with this and how I feel in my own house, living in a neighborhood. So. You know, I just, I feel like this has been going on for a while. And I feel like we have been kind of. Asleep at the wheel here. We haven't really paid attention to it too much. Wasn't really an issue for us, we didn't think. And other communities that were already dealing with this have been dealing with this for a long time. Cripple Creek right now is on and they're going on 12 months now, almost, I think, on their moratorium. And I think from what I heard, they're gonna limit theirs to 35. Now I see a difference in Cripple Creek and us because Cripple Creek's not really a bedroom community. It's it's a 24-hour casino district. But Woodland Park is not. A lot of folks commute out of here, commute in here. So I think for our community, what's best is to probably not have them in residential neighborhoods. Jeff, did you have your hand raised? Oh, okay. Yeah, so. And also some things in there I didn't I didn't really like, seemed like there was some favoritism towards like cabins, things like that. That are narrow properties because the 500-foot thing wouldn't be good for them. Well, it's not good for people that own three in a row in the residential area either, you know? They would have to. Somebody would have to not have a license there. What's what's the difference in the cabins? And then I hear the cabins are can't be lived in like they're not. You know, they're not ready to, you know, is livable like a regular house. You couldn't rent it as a house. For whatever reason, I don't know what the reason is. But you know, we have in there that we you can't use do an SDR in a camper, a tent. Other structures, things like that. Well, then if you have a non-livable residence. How could that even be licensed as an SDR if it doesn't meet the requirements of a livable home? So there's just some problems that I saw that was, you know, that came to my mind, so. Probably all I really have on it.
Rusty, are you ready to?
I'll go ahead and throw my two cents in, but I I do wanna address a topic that came up earlier. Because I actually, David, you were the first one that. Brought up a conflict of interest to me. I had no idea that there would be a conflict of interest because the moratorium. Was voted on. I'm a very. I I voted against it. I I think the moratorium was. Improperly thought through. And I feared at the time that I had no idea what council might do. And to include stripping a fundamental constitutional right away from me, so. I talked to a bunch of a lot of people and advised them, hey, just go pull a application and get it get in line. I did pull the application. I never completed it. I just put my name on it and just put it in a folder. Several weeks after you approached me, David. Evidently it bubbled up amongst other people. So our city attorney called me and we discussed what the situation was. And Jeff laid out the options. And I said, look, I really would like to preserve my vote. And he said that if I simply withdraw, I I by having that application in a place in line. Technically it had value. Some sort of arbitrary, but defined could have been defined and argued as value. So he said, as long as you have that application just sitting in a folder, technically you have something that others don't. So I said, well, what if I just withdraw it? And he said, that makes the problem go away because then you no longer have something that nobody else in the city has. So I officially went in to see Michael and our finance director officially notified him. I am withdrawing it. They know it's on the record. It was withdrawn. It doesn't exist, so I have nothing of value that any other citizen in Woodland Park has. I do not own a SDR. I own a house. Do I believe? Well, let me transition. So I just wanted to address the conflict of interest to my fellow council members. So that hopefully that one's put to rest. Robert, I'm actually Robert and Frank. I'm glad you actually put this policy discussion on. On the calendar and I heard that you you say that we've had a lot of discussion. I I actually have heard a lot of discussions about solutions. But I I kinda approach things trying to define the problem. And I I don't believe we have the problem correctly identified and I'll get to that in a second. The way I look at this whole thing that we're dealing with is I'm a constitutionalist. I I think we have two. Competing constitutional issues here. One of them is clear in the preamble. The preamble clearly states that we are to ensure domestic tranquility. And I believe that is the fundamental problem that's being violated. Why people are upset with the SDRs because. There's no difference between an SDR and an LTR, a long-term rental. If the people that are occupying it are doing the same bad behavior. There's no difference if I had the bad behavior, a permanent resident living in my own homes. If I'm having loud parties at night, just like what's been attributed just to SDRs. Although I can bring up examples if if it's necessary of long-term rentals having parties that have been disruptive. I can bring up where residents having parties have been disrupted. So I don't think the problem by itself is an SDR. It's 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 bad behavior, which that is a major part of the problem. So we have a constitutional issue that I do agree with. Domestic tranquility. Every citizen is entitled to domestic tranquility. But I cannot speak as eloquently as Robert. You covered it brilliantly. We have a second. It's it's constitutional. Our country is founded on property rights. We every homeowner has the right to rent their property. And I know that in doing a lot of reading like we all have done. That at the district court level, a lot of courts have sided with the councils that have banned them or capped them. But if you do some more research, you'll start finding at the appellate levels. Now, the ones I've found are not, they don't have jurisdiction over Woodland Park. But at the appellate level where they kind of step a little bit further away from the decisions of the council. They are overturning the district court and they're agreeing. It is a fundamental right for a property owner to rent their property. And it doesn't matter whether it's a minute, an hour, a day, a week, a year, 10 years, forever. It's a fundamental right to be able to rent your property. You can live in your property. Fundamental by the appellate level. So I kinda listened to those also. So we have a a right that you cited, the Castle Doctrine. Homeowners have the right to rent their property. But every homeowner has the right to have domestic tranquility. And in my opinion, you don't come up with a solution where. One constitutional issue strips somebody else of a constitutional right and vice versa. So I think we have a problem here. We we have people that are evidently making noise. They've got fire rings and stuff. Frank, I I'm glad you threw up some of those slides. There are a lot of little things in there. That I do think we should, whatever ordinance we come up with. I I think we do need to look at some of the the issues and and address those in our ordinance. But to to ban a a fundamental right to be able to rent your property. I I'm not in favor of capping or stopping. I think we should control it. I I think we should have some sort of a a two-strike rule. You know, you get a business license, but if you violate it, you know, okay, the first time a guest violates it, whether it's a long-term. Rental, a short-term rental, a permanent. There are penalties and and if. We do go down the path of mandatory business license for short-term. Then if they violate it twice, they lose their license for a long period of time. So that their neighbor has the domestic tranquility they're entitled to. I I do think there are some. Issues with anybody having multiple guests in your house, whether it's a long-term, short-term, permanent. Parking might be one that we should take a look at also. But noise we have, it's not enforced. Parking we don't have, maybe we should have. Fire rings, things like that. Fire rings, things like that. Maybe we should have that, but this would be applied to long-term. Permanent resident, every, it, it applies equally because bad behavior of a neighbor. Isn't limited to a house that's been on a short-term market website. So S T Rs, long-term rentals, permanent residents, we, we all need to be. Good neighbors and respect. Our other neighbors, and I think those are the things we should be looking at, and those are the true problems, not. Of and by itself, an S T R is a bad thing because they actually are a good thing. They monetarily, they're a good thing for the city. And I think I'm gonna. Give you back your time now. Thank you.
Okay, I have a number of things and I'm, these might not all go in the right order, so spare with me. First, I'm gonna, I'm gonna agree to disagree on the difference between short-term and long-term rentals because a long-term rental does not require a business license. It is not a business, it's residence. It's done as a residential business. That's just semantics. That's just my view, okay? And a short-term rental is being licensed, it's paying taxes. The, the long-term rental is not.
We're all entitled to our.
I know, I, I, thank you. Okay, alright, so that's. My first two cents. I'm not necessarily against the ordinance, but I'm not crazy about parts of it. I'm kind of in favor of what David's. Alluded to, um, with the exception of I don't really take issue with owner-occupied. Short-term rentals in the S R and the U R zone. And you could, you could do the Colorado Springs model where. If you live in it a hundred and eighty-five days, you can short-term rental it with yourself in it and then turn around and short-term rental it with a license. For the remainder of the year, so the snowbirds are taken care of. So, you know, the caps, the cap issue, I don't have necessarily a problem with, other than I think it's too high. And I'm, I'd love to know why. You guys came up with eight percent in the U R when the. It's not even remotely close to that currently. But. Since it is.
Those numbers, um, it was, um, commission, planning commission member, Ken Kennedy.
Okay.
That was working off, uh, one of the last sets of data that we were provided in a joint work session.
Okay.
And was looking at, uh, trying to capture the existing level of short-term rentals. So that really was a focus with a lot of the conversation by the planning commission is what is this level now and how do we stay at that level?
Okay, so I guess one of my issues with the current level numbers don't differentiate between. Owner-occupied and investment. So the percentage really isn't an accurate percentage. So I personally think we might be too high. And we could start at a lower one, and if it turns out that we need to adjust it, we adjust it later, but that's.
The number was based on what we had for data around licenses.
Right, right.
And, and you, and you, you was, uh, counsel can certainly provide other directions. So that was what we were working.
That's, I just wanted to clarify that. Okay.
Hey Catherine, I, I would say too that, um, with the owner occupied. I have no, no issue with that.
I didn't think.
Business license.
Yeah, yeah, I don't.
They live there. They're renting a room. That's kind of what Airbnb started off.
Yeah.
And then they're, well, they're like, what are you doing this? And then it turns into a whole house.
Yeah, the only issue I have with that is the snowbirds. If you only live here six months and you rent out the house six months. Short-term, that would be where I would say you, you require a license, but that's, you, you need somebody to verify that too. So, so that one's one of those gray area ones for me too.
Yeah.
But I mean. From a personal perspective, I still go back to the fundamental, it's a business. It's not a residence and therefore it doesn't belong in a residential neighborhood now. So I think. I'm done.
Well, can I ask a question since you're, you're, you're using businesses to differentiator between the short-term, long-term? What differentiates it from? Hillary, I'm gonna use you. She, she's got a home pet sitting business. So why would a, that's a business. She uses her home as, why isn't that? Fall into a different category?
It does.
She, she lives in her home.
She lives in her home too.
It's actually a home-based business.
I mean, but, but if you're buying a house, if you're buying property and you're turning around. And you're, you don't live in it, you've never planned to live in it, and you're short-term renting, you're, you're. Room, you're renting out rooms every night. That is a business that you do not live in. It therefore is not a residence. I know it's the engineer black and white in me, I'm sorry, but to me, you're not residing in that house.
Attorney on definitions because we had this conversation and I don't think your definition meets what the, the, the definition of the state.
It doesn't, but that's.
Okay, also some confusion I found too, like, so, so Rusty about, uh, about the constitution here, constitutionality, I mean. When you live in a city or you do business in a city, you've got to follow that city's rules. And zoning was put in place for a reason.
Oh, I, I.
And so when you put a lodging business in a residential zone. Then you've put a business separately in that zone that you don't live at. It's, it's an actual business.
And David, I'm not against taxing them.
Explain what I'm saying. And so, so as far as constitutionality, I mean, part of the constitution is that the reason we're a, a, a. Constitutional republic and not a democracy is because we're by, we're rule of law. Okay, and we have laws to stop us from killing each other and fighting each other and doing us crazies, right? So in those laws, we do things like create zones and zoning in our cities.
And.
And so we have to follow that zoning. Now, if you want to have short-term rentals out in the city and the residential areas, fine, rezone it. Rezone it to, and to a commercial use district. If you feel that strongly about it. But otherwise, we, we did do what we did here, like, was in his presentation, these are residential areas. And that's just. You know how it is. And one of our priorities here was that we were looking at housing and, um, making it housing available for people. If you have a short-term rental in a residential neighborhood, well, that takes another house off the market. For a family, for someone that's going to be a resident. And then you said that, um, there's no, it's just bad behavior that, that is an issue here. Well, I don't think it's just bad behavior. I think in this small community. I, I know all my neighbors, I know who they are, like them or not, I know them. And if there's people in there all the time that are just, I don't know, and I have young kids. Maybe I don't want a bunch of people in and out of that house that I don't know. And I, I want to keep that continuity in my neighborhood of my, of my neighbors, either being long-term renters that I get to know. You know, or, or homeowners. So I think there's a, there's a difference there. I mean, do you understand my point of view here? I, I, I know, but I just want to.
Not only do I understand it, I respect it. I, I do. I've had this very conversation with my wife. And that's why I'm, I'm struggling with this one because I still believe it is a right of a homeowner to rent their property. I, I just do. Now, if we want to put. License requirements in place. I, I can support that. If we want to tax them differently, I can support that. If there are certain fire restrictions that we want to put in place. We, but I'm about protecting people.
Totally understand that, but I go back to kind of what Hillary said a while back, probably a month ago or more. She said, why have these regulations if you can't enforce them? We can't afford to enforce all these. You know, uh, detailed government, new government regulations on these things. When simple solution is just follow what is in place. We see what other, other communities are doing. And that just solves that problem. And then they're in commercial zoned areas. And that's, and that's it. Otherwise, if you have them. You've got a lot of host of other problems and enforcement's going to be tough. We don't have a large budget. We struggle with just paying our city employees. And now we're going to have to have a code enforcement officer, people to sit in the planning department to help deal with this. And they just, they just can't. And so therefore there wouldn't be any enforcement. And we're relying on the recognizance of the person running the business to self-inspect and deal with problems. And we put all these things in there, like I saw on the thing here that I read about. You know, uh, having someone that's available, they have to be reachable in two hours or what, what, all these different things, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
We can't enforce that realistically. We just can't.
Agree.
So that's, I mean. I want to give people an opportunity to, to run a business, but I also want to preserve the, the neighborhoods that. You know, for what they're intended to be.
So I, I, Catherine may not be through all of her thoughts, but I want to try to give everyone the opportunity. So I'm gonna go ahead and let Kelly chime in here.
Are you finished? Go ahead.
No, no, he, he actually, David got to more or less what I was gonna say, so. Quite the same words, but close enough.
Thanks. Something that I have always said, and I was taught early on in my twenty-five-plus-year career in municipal government is. You don't ever want to enact a law you can't enforce. It's a waste of time. And so I think the reality of enforcement needs to be priority in whatever we do. When I, first, we talked about this at first. My approach, and I've even talked with people in the community about that I, what I thought the council's approach was after talking with you and kind of hearing. What we were doing and where we thought we might go was more of an accountability approach. To this, putting the, putting an accountability measures in place. So that the owners of the properties that are the subject of our discussion. Know what their, their, the expectations are of them. And that's where I, I don't disagree with the licensing for an S T R and an appropriate fee. That would, um, pay for. That bit of enforcement that would be required through the licensing process. And in that licensing process, which I think we've seen some good examples of. Our policies that they agree to and good neighbor policies that they agree to. And the fact that they would be obligated to inform, screen and take it upon themselves to do. This the right way, as we've heard from a lot of folks and most folks I think that are having S T Rs are doing it the right way. We have those bad apples. That rise to the top and we hear the nightmares and the stories about those. Not that they're, I don't think they are the rule. I think they're the exception. I. And so my approach, when we started all of this, that I really was supportive of and agreed to because. I don't think we want to jump off the cliff. I don't think we want to go all the way down the road right away because. We need to test, we need to see how what we put in place works. How the, the industry reacts to it. And, and then modify as we go along. If we need to get more stringent, we can. Can't get less, but we can get more. And, and, and go about this in a more organized, um, manner and. And see how we do and adjust as we go along. And I, and.
Make a comment when you're done?
Yes.
For you, or, or can I just, you can interject.
Interject, okay, so the only, I don't disagree with the exception of it's harder to go more restrictive. Than it is to go less restrictive because if we start out more restrictive. We're not going to have to grandfather anybody. If we start out less restrictive, then we're going to have to grandfather people. Am I correct? No, I mean, going, I mean, if, if we.
I think it's the other way around.
The other way around?
Yes, I agree.
Yes.
I, I have some.
I have, we've had this conversation about other things that we've worked on in the past. And, and it's, it's, we can add regulation, can't take it away.
So, so, so bear, so bear with my brain. If we start out at one percent, a cap of one percent, say an S R. And then we decide that. Yeah, okay, you're right. It's, I have it backwards. Sorry, thank you.
So I, I just would like to, um. Do this a little more. Friendly. I, I am never, uh, supportive of heavy-handed regulation. And that's what I see. I think we're going off the deep end and. I am absolutely a free market person. This is, this is the way the market is going. It's, it's. And, and who am I to say? As a member of this council and we would be a joint body making a, a decision. That, um, someone can't do something with their private property. Um, because.
Get chickens.
You can have chickens. And, and I just, I. I just, it just doesn't go with what. Our country is all about. And, and so.
These are businesses.
And so.
Property rights with businesses.
I understand.
Park next door to homeowners.
I understand.
Long-term homeowners don't want the parties on the weekends. They do not.
I don't think everyone's having parties on the weekends. This is where that, I don't want to argue.
People who are investing.
Okay. I don't want to argue, I'm just saying. There are those, and, and there are penalties to be invoked with a license. That if that continues to happen at that location. And there has to be someone that's accountable for that. I mean. I agree with that. That's where that accountability issue comes into play. I think first, if we start with accountability and hold people accountable. And if they don't follow the regulations like Rusty suggested, there's strikes. I think one strike is, that's where you correct. And if it continues, then you get penalized. And at some point that license can be revoked. And then that business or that operation ceases to exist at that location. Or maybe even if they own more than one, they lose to write the right to have an S T R of any nature or number. That's an accountability approach.
So then, but with that, the next person. Can come in and buy that house when they sell it and turn it into an S T R. Apply for a license and we're back doing it again. Where there's another.
Maybe, maybe not.
And the residents that live around them have to put up with it.
Maybe, maybe not.
And it's not just about parties, it's about having, like I said, that not having. Constant strangers around your house, you know, if you have little kids running around, I, I don't, I wouldn't want it. I mean, I don't have it, I'm lucky, but I wouldn't want it if I did.
Well, I, I have rentals, long-term rentals amount, around me as well. And there's some of those that are worse than a lot of the short-term rentals I've seen around here. And, and they cause a nuisance in my neighborhood as well. There's arguments for all of this, but I'm not saying that we. I think there is a problem. I don't think that it's a, a rampant problem. And I am, I'm just not. In line with heavy-handed regulation at this time.
So council member. There wouldn't have to be any regulation if it wasn't in a residential area. Running a lodge in a residential area, there wouldn't even be a regulation. It's already zoned.
I have a question. I have a question for the council. How many of you, uh, rent and stay in short-term rentals in other cities? You've never done that.
You've never done, I've stayed in cabins and counties. I don't find it comfortable to stay in a city. I can just get a hotel.
But you, you have rented a short-term rental.
I have.
Yes.
The council, the council member case, could you address in your, uh, your concept? How you reconcile that with the zoning districts we have already established in our city? How does that wash for you?
I. I haven't, I don't have an answer for that, Robert. I haven't thought that all the way through. I just know, I just. I don't know how we got from. Where we started and where we are today. I, I, and I, I hear that, I hear you in the audience and I understand, I'm just trying to express my thoughts. And it, it's maybe that's where we end up. I don't know. But to, to completely go off the deep end to begin with just seems to be. It's just not the way our country works, in my opinion. We hear about constitutionality. We talk about the declaration and all of those documents that are our founding documents in our country. And how we go from there to, I mean, I've, I've heard all of you talk about your conservative. No, no big government. This is exactly big government. This is.
Actually, it's just, actually, it's, that's not true. That's not accurate.
Existing code, we have none of this.
Well, here's another, this is my last point.
Right now, stick with the existing title eighteen.
I'd like to.
We would have nothing else to do.
I have, I have one more point I'd like to make.
Yeah.
Is that we have a code, and I've mentioned this to staff before. We have a code in our, in our. That is in place now that governs home occupation. That regulates businesses operating in residence, residential districts.
Very small.
Why, excuse me, I didn't interrupt you, Frank. Thank you. The, we have used that ordinance when I was in the city's finance director. When a business license application came through the finance department. If it was a business operating in a residence, it went directly to the planning department for review. With regards to the home occupation ordinance and code. And they signed off on it first to see if it fell within those regulations before we would issue a business license.
An owner occupied, right?
Yeah, it's a, it's a homeowner running a business in their home.
These are not owner occupied.
Trisha's had one doing car repair across from her. Car repair, right, Trisha?
There are not, there are any more.
But they were, but they were.
That's an important case to bring up. We actually have three businesses that look like a clomeration, an assemblage, if you will, here in real estate, you understand the assemblage of property. If you have three properties that have half an acre each, about an acre and a half, prospective commercial uses. And that's what kept happening in Northwood's neighborhood until and those businesses now have moved on. And we have attracted healthy families that have two, four and five children each.
I understand. So
They don't want to see hotels moving in.
I understand, and I don't believe they're hotels. That's a pretty exaggeration. But anyway, I, my point was, thank you for answering my question. The home occupation regulation is a tool that is on the books that could serve a purpose in this instance. And there's something there, the zoning question, I, I haven't formulated an answer to that. I just wanted to bring up where we started and where we are. And just, just to, to kind of just get that thought process going because we've come, we've taken a giant leap from where we started. And it concerns me because it's, it's an equity thing and I, I understand, I hear the argument. But it's, it just is what it is. So that's my thought. Right, wrong or indifferent, it's mine.
So can I ask you a quick, on the, on that home occupancy thing you were talking about? Cause I
Occupation.
Occupation, sorry. Thank you. Occupation. If you used that with the way the zoning is currently written and somebody comes in and applies for an STR and they don't live in the house and this is a flat, they're going to STR the whole house. That's not an occup, a home occupancy or sorry, occupation. That's a business, right? I mean, would that not be the way to regulate this currently, the way we have the zoning written now?
I would have to read it again, but I'm just questioning that home occupation.
Yeah, but get, but
Code.
The home occupation code, you could use clearly to apply to a home, to an owner occupied STR.
But that doesn't seem
But that doesn't issue.
It's, but it's not an issue.
Actually change the code. The code has a specific percentage of your house size that can actually be used.
Yes.
Not the entire.
I didn't say the entire, so if it's an owner occupied.
Well, I would like to address a council member case with three or four examples of, of why this is, there's plenty of data now, and that's what I think is so valuable. There's, the American Planning Association did a publication and I'm happy to send it to council. I don't know where I got it. But anyway, from January and February of 2019, it's called the PAST Memo. They do a really good analysis of what happened in New Orleans. So way before the, the, the RBOs and Airbnb came along, they found that their community in the French Quarter was getting destroyed because when the Mardi Gras came, it was just like everybody who's renting out their house and then they lost their sense of community. And I think to me, the most important thing we have to watch here is what do we want for Woodland Park as a community? Now you can go down to Fort Lauderdale. They have thirty-five percent of their community are now short-term rentals. That's like, forget community in Fort Lauderdale. One of our community members here approached me to say, yeah, you know, we were thinking about buying a place down in, in Texas on the beach. I'm forgetting which city it was. They went down there and they found a property that had never been rented before, so they're really happy about that. Well, they went back at night and there was people everywhere. There was no parking. They go, this is crazy. What's going on? And so they talked with a realtor and the realtor said, oh yeah, these are all short-term rentals down here. But, and you could rent yours when you're not down here. They were going there to retire. They were looking for community to, to, to connect with other people down by the beach and they discovered they're in a community that was totally out of the same problem with short-term rentals. They lost the sense of community character. So I think that part of this whole process is we need to look at other communities who've already wrestled with this. They're already facing it. And say, do we want that here? We can set policy that says what we want for our community. And I think I've heard a lot, I've heard, when it was interesting in this process, when we first had the people come to the U-Pass Cultural Center, most of that representation was business owners. And it seemed like the community voice was slower to come into the conversation. But now, boy, the community's voice is very clear and strong, at least to my ear. I might be wrong, but I'm hearing hundreds and hundreds of folks coming up and going, wait a minute, what are we doing here? So I think it's to be simple, to keep government minimized. We look at this as we stick to our zones and we look at what we have as a policy. Yes, I was talking to Michael about this. We're going, we're going to take a hit. If we make this decision, we'll take a hit in lodging tax. But we also are moving forward with the whole economic development phase of where we are as a city that I think can totally change the dynamic. It's worth us investing in that to see that kind of strength in the business community naturally from within the business community, rather than detracting from our, our residential component, our bedroom community. Even when I first came to town and I'll, I'll stop, but I'll just stop there.
You were fine.
Oh, okay. Well, I was going to say, when I first came to town, I was going, no, we've got a fantastic potential here to have a destination. And I recognize that's not the tone of all of the city. It's not. We do want to have a bedroom community. And yet I recognize we also have to have a strong business community. We have to have both. But we've already zoned it that way. So we can develop the corridors of the business community, make that strong, do what's necessary there to keep our, our three hundred and sixty-five days a year health in our business community and yet still preserve our, our integrity and
Yeah. So Robert, with that too, you know, I, I'm looking at this, you know, as far as, you know, free market, you know, we all say we're, we're conservative here and this and that. So and I am too, and I, and I, I'm for free markets. And doing what you want. And the market demand may be to have them. That's fine. There's a market demand for marijuana. We'll be talking about that soon too, I bet you, if Cripple Creek passes theirs.
Not me.
So, but, but you see, my point is that just because the market demands, it doesn't mean that the neighborhood wants it. So, so we have to stick to the, to the zones that we, we established or change them. You know?
I just have to, I, I just, I looked up home occupation. And it really does not apply because, and I'll tell you why, just so the record, you all know. It says that the home occupation shall occupy no more than twenty-five percent of the total gross floor, floor area of the dwelling unit. And it's incidental and subordinate to residential purposes. So scratch that, please. Thank you.
And, and I want to be clear as well on this. I'm not saying that short-term rentals, there's not a need for them. There are. But if it's, if you, it's your house and you, and, and I think it goes back to the whole Airbnb original model. It happened in two thousand and eight. There was a crash in the market. The guy needed his, to offset his, his, his loan payment. And so he put an air mattress in his living room and offered him a cup of coffee and some yogurt or whatever for and, and that's how, that's really, that's how it started. But it's morphed now in a way that, that it's being used as a financial model for people who don't live in their house. And, and that to me changes it. It just changes it completely. It's not that they can't do it, but I think it should be done and developed in commercial districts. And the last point on that is this, well, no, it is. It's like, we can just save a whole bunch of regulation by just not trying to mix and match this. And I think that's what we've tried to do is laudable as your effort has been, as laudable as that effort is, we're mixing and matching and we're trying to make everybody happy and try to figure all this out. And it's like, by policy, we can establish it, we can settle the matter and not spend a lot of our, our tax resources trying to, to, to massage that.
Well, and so with that too, you know, like talking to market demand for this, yeah, you're right. There's a need. And I've stated them. I'm not sure what, we like to stay in cabins. There's like, you go up to different areas, you can stay in the mountains in cabins. And they're out of the area. They're not in a, really in a neighborhood. And, and I, I enjoy that myself over a hotel. But as far as I kind of lost my point there, actually.
There's people complaining about that too.
So I'm sure, and that's okay. I'll stay in a hotel then if that comes a problem. So shoot. I forgot what I was going to say there on that. Something you said sparked me on that, on, oh, so market demand, right? So yeah, there may be a market demand and these cities have gotten a, a lot of STRs. And now we're even seeing Colorado Springs, we're seeing Cripple Creek, we're seeing our neighbors that yes, there's a market demand and now the city governments and municipal governments are having to go in and, and fix this. And a lot of them are, are going to owner occupied only to do that. I mean, it's just a fact.
Yeah. Ten years of moratorium has been on short-term rentals in New York, New Orleans. Ten years.
All right. Well, I'm going to just remind you guys, like I did last time. Whatever regulations you want to put in place, be prepared to pay for them. I know, I think right now eighty-six percent of the short-term rentals are in our residential neighborhoods. You can't, I don't think legally, just end that. So you can't just strip them of that right. The short-term rental, their licenses that they currently hold.
Frank, could you speak into your mic? Yeah. No, no, we can't strip them, but they all expire on the thirty-first of December.
When they expire and it will be different years for different people. So
No, I think they all
Is it all
The same.
All the same.
All December, December thirty-first.
Okay.
Yeah. And I think, I'm just on that point, Mayor, I'd just like to suggest this. We have to look at the fact, yes, if we choose to go this route, then it's going to be some form of cold turkey. But if we license them again, we set ourselves up for political liability, if I understand it. Cause now we have said, we've already established policy, but now we're saying, oh, okay, you can really do it. And, and we mess with everything we're trying to do to set the, the, set some, a tone for something.
So, so I think that's what Catherine was getting at when she said, if we do this, we can't go back.
Right.
So if you say, yes, we are going to license them or we are going to allow this in a residential neighborhood by ordinance, once you do that, if it's a problem.
You can't undo it.
You know,
Well, you can, but it's very difficult and costly.
More difficult to do it that way. Whereas in this case, there wasn't anything. It was kind of the Wild West. They did what they wanted. Bought whatever property they wanted, turned it into STR and, and now we're dealing with it for the first time. So we need to set it right the first time. Whatever that comes to, when
Correct.
With me or not, or whatever happens with the council. But, but yeah, that's, I think what she was saying.
So, yeah, well, I agree.
Well, and I just want to say also, I'm not sure how much of the commercial zoning is in the DDA district. But remember, if you want to do something like that or allow it in DDA district, those taxes don't go to ambulance. They don't go to fire. They don't go to school. They go to DDA. Right now we have over forty thousand that goes to schools, over forty thousand that goes to ambulance, I think, or you know, police. We've got forty thousand that goes to streets.
Can I ask if, is that for a property tax, homeowner property tax, that do we actually have homeowners within the DDA?
Yes.
And do that property tax they pay goes to the same as everybody else, right? On their house? Or does it go to the DDA? Does not come to the city?
The increment goes to the DDA, but a lodging tax will not come. The DD will withhold more taxation, not lodging. They, they get to withhold more taxation on property than because also, or, or if you want to do it in commercial, are they going to be charged the twenty-some percent commercial taxation?
Yeah.
And not property.
But also, they might be.
But that's the thing. I'm just, I'm not, I'm just putting out, here's the things you guys need to think about. They don't expire for quite a while. Nine, they've got nine more years and another council could re-initiate them. You don't, we don't know what will happen in nine years. So I'm just putting these things out on the table. I'm not saying one way or the other. I'm just saying, these are things you guys need to think about. Because that's eighty-six percent. That's a huge portion of taxation that comes to the city and goes to streets and schools and other things. I'm just saying. To be aware of it.
So
Those are, those are numbers that are real.
It's a valid consideration. And I know that the current chair of the, I think he's actually here, but the current chair has said he's very desirous to, to develop agreements with any new developments that do cater for the fire department, et cetera. So I think that moving forward, it certainly can be a discussion we can solve. I, I think we can.
So that's just putting that out there. Also, I'm hearing, I'm still hearing a lot of the problem are, are ordinance violations. Cause I wrote them down from each one of you and it was cars, it was fire, it was noise. Those are ordinance issues. The only thing I can hear for short-term is character of neighborhood and I don't like not knowing who's living in that house. Which I think is a little odd considering that in this day and age, most people don't know who their neighbors are or don't even take the time to know who they are.
We, we do, we do. You saw our, you saw our party.
There's a difference in how to transient, a transient, daily transient flow though, than having a neighbor you don't talk to.
So
Big difference in that when you have little kids running around and you don't know who's in there from day to day to day. So
But I don't know that that resolves
Ordinance.
That issue. So, but for some people, they may feel that it does. For other people, it doesn't.
The people that I've heard from.
And the data is out there from other communities that it does, that it, it makes a big difference. So we can either learn from them or we can stumble through it ourselves.
And there, the other, the only other thing is this whole argument of, well, you know, the short-term rental and it blocks people from being able to buy the house. No, money is what blocks people from being able to buy a house. People who can have enough money to put that payment down no matter what your intention is with the home. So, cause I, cause, well, I've asked, I've asked different cities and I've asked different councils. Okay. Well then, now who's buying the house? How did that help? Did it make the price go down? Did it make it more affordable? That's what I'm trying to say. Cause I keep hearing it saying, it'll make it more affordable. That is not a data-driven argument. That is a personal opinion argument.
I'm not making that argument.
I'm just saying I wrote down more affordable housing. I just wrote down what I was hearing from you guys.
I'm saying available housing, not affordable.
Yeah.
So
It might's market driven.
But it's available to who can afford it.
Yeah, of course.
And not having short-term rentals doesn't make it more affordable.
No, it makes it more available.
More available.
Back in inventory. So you got stuff to choose from.
Well, I can tell you right now, the market's changed. We've got a lot, quite a bit of inventory and it's sitting on the market. And, and I, I can tell you also that there are, there is turnover in short-term rentals. I list them, people in my office list them and they do turnover. So it's not that they stay forever. And that, that happens all over the county, not just in, in town here. So it, it, the market has changed and not to say that, I mean, I'm that whole affordable is attainable, whatever it's called is, is a whole different conversation.
That's not what we're, that's not what we're saying.
No, I understand that that's coming up.
Freezes a house up for someone to, a family to buy it if it can't be an STR.
And some of those STRs also can still be long-term rentals. You know, there's nothing stopping a homeowner renting in on a long-term basis. And that does open up inventory for our staff, for our first responders, for the working class and for students here. And all of those categories are having to either live down the hill or, I mean, even our planning director doesn't live up here, you know, it's like sorry to bring you into the conversation.
More of an affordability issue. We had a conversation about that just the other day with, when Senator Hickenlooper was here. And, and we were talking about Habitat for Humanity. Some, some interesting data came up in that conversation as well. That, that, like I say, that's a whole different topic and conversation.
So guys, I'm going to go ahead and let Michael address one thing, but the only thing that I saw, one of the things I saw from planning that I had an issue with though, is that agricultural property was not going to be allowed. And I feel like if you're living on four hundred acres and have a ranch and you want to Airbnb it, who cares?
I agree.
So yeah, we don't, but, but I'm just saying agriculture was one of the things that was on the chart that wasn't allowed. And I was, I don't understand that. So I'm just bringing it up. Michael, go ahead.
So just a final question for you all. We will have the initial posting of the ordinance drafted by the planning commission coming to you on October twentieth for that commerce. Well, that's initial posting. So I don't know if we would imagine having a lot of dialogue on that. But going forward, is there anything resulting from this conversation tonight that you all would like to see from staff?
Yeah. Personally, I'd like to see an alternative ordinance. I would like to see an alternative ordinance drafted that limits them along the lines of where our discussion has been here this evening. And that gives council an opportunity to look at what's in place and also an opportunity to take another ordinance suggestion. Take that to, to the planning commission and get Take that to, to the planning commission and get them to run that through the process. Because I think that without this discussion we've had tonight, they really have been flying by the seat of their pants. And I think that we're really, we're, we're gonna get here as an initial posting, will not be something that's actionable. It's just not, because we haven't talked about it, we're gonna have to go back again and do this. So I would propose that we look at an alternative, alternative ordinance that we can then, that council can draft, send it to the planning commission and have them refine. And then we would be more heading in the same direction, instead of trying to patchwork what they've presented to us. And I don't know, do you need consensus, or is that something that just a couple of us put together and, and get on the agenda, or how does that work?
Oh, I would just say that I, I don't agree with the fact that the planning commission didn't get direction from council. We had three work sessions, and I think they walked away with a list from what we had here. And the conversations we had here that the attorney took and worked with them to, to prepare. So.
I don't agree with that.
I don't agree with that.
And that's fine, you don't have to agree with me, that's just what I remember and what I perceive.
I, I view it as they were trying to appease everybody. So what they did is they took every single good idea and put it in the ordinance.
I would agree.
Such an overkill.
I would agree.
Of rules, I mean, David, I agree a hundred percent, there was so much in there, and the cost
Yeah.
for every single one of those things. If, if we did have a consensus to ask for a second, you know, ordinance version. Scale it down, pare it down, so that, look at things that are gonna be the most expensive to enforce. And I would start with striking some of those things out, and then let us have a pare down to compare it to.
To start with.
Conversation.
Close to start.
Pardon me?
I think it's a place to start instead.
I would agree, but I think Robert's asking for something different, I think he's asking that it be restricted zone by zone. I think you're asking for something not, not less wordy, I think he's asking for something entirely different.
I think he is, and I, and I would just point this out, that if, if we need to do this and come to a consensus that that needs to happen. So that planning is gonna do that, I, I would just caution that let's not drag this out ten months. Like whatever's gonna happen, whether it's allowed in the zoning residential or not, and that's what we come up with, and that's what's voted on. I just don't want to drag this, you know, moratorium out longer than we have to. I'd rather just get it done, pull the Band-Aid off.
Let me just say, one of the suggestions would be then on November third, when it comes before us. We have the discussion of what's in it and what we do and don't want, and then they have to go back and draft another one. That can also be done.
If it's substantive, they'll have, we'll have to start over with another first.
Right, but Robert's asking for a different one entirely to be written as well, which also has to start over.
Right.
Also.
So that would be a third version.
So what it sounds like to me is this one is not satisfactory, like it's not satisfying anyone.
So bringing it up is we're gonna go through a first reading, a discussion, the whole thing, we're all gonna conclude. We've already concluded before we get out the gate. And that's why I'm suggesting we look at doing a draft of something else, that we can get some degree of consensus on. That is, that takes some of their findings, but takes what we've discussed tonight and moves it forward. That, so we're not wasting one extra step of spending, you know, first hearing, first reading and all the rest of it.
Well, Michael, we, we could have, ask Michael to put together a matrix and then have the council take a look at all of the different things and, and get each one of us to send. I could support this one, I could support this one, not this. So at least that matrix comes down to something that you can see where you're gonna get four votes.
I think we could simplify it, maybe, but.
Maybe we see, maybe we each look at the ordinance, we give some feedback to the staff, but where, where we are with each item in the ordinance individually. And staff can, can, can bring that together, I don't know, Michael, what do you, I just want to create more work for staff.
I was going to defer to my attorney, but we, I have some thoughts, but I'm gonna let Jeff.
Well, we of course are happy to draft up whatever you all reach consensus on. And I heard just in this round robin of comments from everybody, I heard a lot of ideas, like several folks were talking about owner occupied only, banning them entirely in residential zones. All I need is direction as to what to draft.
I think we're all in consensus that owner occupied is not a problem, not an issue.
I agree.
So I don't think anybody wants to ban them totally, I think owner occupied is probably, I don't think anyone here has heartburn with that.
I just think you could, I need to hear some consensus from everybody before I'm sent forward to try and draft it.
So I think that's, yeah, so I think, yeah, we, we should do that.
Yeah, I think we need to continue this, either this meeting, after this meeting, or at another time then.
See what we can get done after the meeting.
Yeah, we don't have a long meeting. Right.
So.
Right, so we need to.
Put it on the agenda for next, let's put it on the agenda for next, next session.
We can pull initial posting.
Pull them, and pull initial posting, great, yeah.
Put it on the agenda as a discussion again, or as a work session.
Work session. Well, and, but, and on the agenda for a vote, I mean, of a motion or something, so we can actually take an actionable step, because we couldn't take an actionable step.
Right, we need a consensus of something.
Right.
So.
Cause the, cause the problem right now is we're, we're kind of split on allowing non-owner occupied in a residential area or not. I think that's what it comes down to at this point. And we need to, in order to move forward, we're gonna have to just lay it on the table and see if we've got four votes or we do not. And then, then we can move forward with what, with whatever the case is. But until we do that, we're just gonna waste our.
Michael and I are over here, you go.
I, I, I think, I think I, that's similar to what I've heard, and maybe Jeff too, is it's really, do, do you want to have caps and buffers? Or do you want to have nothing and non-owner occupied residential? Is there?
That's where I think we're at.
Good neighbor guidelines, penalties, I mean, all, all that seems fairly subtle on our occupied, but it just kind of comes down to that, right?
Yeah, cause I think.
Are we missing anything else?
No, I think when you're looking at penalties and, and, and all the other issues we talked about, that'll still all apply whether we have it in the residential area or not. So that's really, I don't think what we have to say.
So, so maybe, maybe what we do then is, what I said is have dueling ordinances. And, and you all can go, go from there.
Yeah, I mean, the, the first one's already written. We'll prepare a scaled-down version along the lines of what you all have mentioned.
Something that's enforceable, I mean, I, I think something that's enforceable, because.
Cause there was not, I also didn't hear a lot of consensus on whether, whether and to what extent we actually have a problem. There seemed to be a bit of dissonance around here about how big a, how big an elephant there is here. So that, I think, bears on this as well.
It's got to.
You need a very modest program if you have a very big problem. If you have a big problem, you need a more, you know, robust solution.
And if the, as the problem, problem grows, the reaction to it grows.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't think we need to jump off the cliff.
Okay, Michael and Jeff, are you all right, do you feel?
I think, I think so, thank you, Mayor, well. We will, I guess, bring both of those back for initial post, can we have dialogue in initial posting for?
We have dialogue.
Council can have dialogue.
Yeah. So.
So then to be clear, we're gonna have ordinance we have now that's pared down a little bit. And then we're gonna have one where they're not allowed in the residential areas unless they're owner occupied. Is that what I'm understanding?
One we have now.
One we have now. And one with owner occupied only and resident.
Correct.
Okay, yeah. And, and be clear what we're doing.
And allowing it in commercial zones.
Aren't they already allowed in commercial zones?
Okay, Jeff.
Yes, you got too many things going on.
Owner occupied only, and only in commercial zones.
My, my question about the commercial zones is, isn't it already only, I mean, that's, you, you don't even have to state that it's only commercials on, so you, because it's already authorized?
Yeah, right.
I'm writing down what we want to accomplish at the end of the law, I'll make the changes.
Sure.
Yeah, so that was status quo.
Okay, we're gonna go ahead, are you guys, Jeff, are you good?
Yes.
Okay, we're gonna adjourn until seven twenty.
Mayor? Yeah, I just need everybody to log in promptly. And also, I want the audience to know, we put out a sign-in, a sign-up sheet for public comment. If you want to speak during the council meeting, now you can speak about something that's not on the agenda.
So if they want to speak on, on what we just talked about, they could talk.
Get signed up. And the Broncos are winning six-oh, if anyone cares.